Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Should like to call this city council meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy. Councilmember Vicaro. Vice Mayor Tim.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Yeah, and the invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Art Zachar from the Berea and Baptist Church here in Fairfield. Pastor?
...that you will help them as they make decisions, to make the best decisions that they can to move our city forward. Most of all, Lord, we pray that you'll help them as they glorify God. And, Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Councilwoman Moy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, please. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
Well, this is always a festive night, so I just want to welcome everybody and let's have a good time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening and for watching from home. I just want to give you a gentle reminder about our community dinner, our holiday dinner. It's coming up on December the 15th at Bethel Community Church where Pastor Anthony Gilmore is the senior pastor. That's at 600 East Tabor. And we're asking you to RSVP. This is going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have, of course, Santa Claus in the house. We're going to have music, food, arts and crafts, gifts. We're going to have most of our esteemed city council and mayor there serving dinner to everyone. We're going to have... The Rotary Club is going to volunteer and serve food as well. Fairfield Sassoon Chamber is providing turkeys and hams. My voice is hoarse, I'm sorry. My kids, I yell at them too much, I think. I don't know what it is. But anyway, we're going to have a ton of fun and we're asking you to come out. Please RSVP if you still can. We were asking for RSVPs by November 19th through 30th, but Don Labarre, where are you? Can we still RSVP? Please, we can still... You can still RSVP. Please come out and join us December 15th and happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, please.
I'm going to pass to Nightmare.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I just wanted to give a shout out to Main Street Friday night downtown, Christmas tree lighting. It was absolutely phenomenal. Probably the most people I've seen there since it's been going on. We had a great time. Our granddaughter ran us ragged, but it was... It was well done. The weather could not have been more perfect. So Scott, Margaret, I just wanted to say thank you. Number two, I am looking for transportation. Fifteen kids from Samyato started a basketball league. And if anybody out there knows how I can get a van, steal a van, borrow a van, they have about fifteen games and they need a van to get around. So if anybody out there that's in the audience or at home and you know where I can come up with one, please certainly give me a call. These kids are staying out of trouble after school. It's all volunteer, the coaches. And it was explained to me, it was a Coach Carter moment. They played their first game last week in Pittsburgh, pulling on jerseys and shorts as they pulled in because their uniforms hadn't arrived mismatched, but they were quote "ballers." They actually won. So if anybody knows of something or someplace that I can look, please let me know. And a Merry Christmas to you all. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I should like to report, Council, you remember Solano Symphony had some financial difficulties and they came to the city council. I went to their concert on Saturday evening and what a magnificent performance it was. The sad part was even though there was a choir of students there, there were very, very few people in that audience. And that's sad. And this Friday night, of course, Solano Winds will be performing in the Downtown Theater. So urge everyone, if you want to hear some really fine music, please attend those concerts. And you're absolutely correct, Mr. Vice Mayor. The downtown tree lighting ceremony was really a huge success. And Mr. City Manager, I really appreciate all the work that Public Service, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and it was great to have Santa Claus arrive on a fire truck once again. Some of those children will never forget that. Your report, please, sir.
This evening, I have nothing to report. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have a report, just want to congratulate everyone on being reelected.
Thank you. In the process then, Madam Clerk, for public comments, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes total with one minute to summarize their remarks. Thank you.
And our first speaker will be Cherie Belandres, please, to be followed by Maya Sinlosik.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Chari Belandres and I'm a student at Solano Community College. Imagine for a moment you're not in this room, instead you're outside, living out in the streets. You have no shelter and no money to buy food. When it rains, you're wet, and when it's cold, you're freezing. That is the life of someone who's homeless. Today, I'm here to talk about homelessness. The purpose of my speech is to suggest ways and how we can help the homeless that we see around our county. Now, I will explain the issue and suggest ways on how we, as a community, can help. As someone who every now and then goes to the local stores in the area such as Costco or Safeway, I often see people roaming around the streets asking for food or money. Because I'm a full-time student, I currently don't have a job, therefore, I'm not able to give the homeless any money to help. And this brings me to my suggestion, which is to have a homeless pick up the trash they find littering in the area and simultaneously pay them for that job. This kills two birds with one stone because you're able to help the homeless by paying them to do something productive while keeping the community clean. One other simple way we can help is to have events such as food drives or donating clothes or food. With this situation, I believe that even donating something small will be a huge help to those in need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Maya Sinlosik, please. And if I mispronounced her name, please correct me.
Hello, my name is Maya Sindesich. I'm a local resident here in Fairfield. Now, we've all experienced traffic in our lives at one point in time or another. Wouldn't it be nice if we knew ahead of time if there's going to be a lane closure or construction going on in your neighborhood? I would like to give a shout out to the Communications Manager, Gail Spears, for doing just that by having previously updated our community about pavement maintenance via the Nextdoor app. I propose there be more notifications like this, whether it be through the Nextdoor app or something similar to the Nixle text alerts. I'm going to start by describing what this alert would be for, then I will evaluate the impact this would have on our community. This alert would solely pertain to roadwork or other things that can be anticipated to cause traffic in our neighborhoods and subdivisions. Now that you have an idea of what this alert would refer to, let's get to the impact of such an alert would have. This alert would make it easier for citizens to plan their daily commutes and could potentially reduce the amount of traffic due to people having the ability to then choose alternative routes. In addition to this, our citizens will also be able to take comfort and be made aware of what is going on or will take place in their neighborhoods and community. Overall, I believe this alert will better alleviate traffic by informing citizens. Utilizing social media such as the Nextdoor app or an alert such as the Nixle text alert is a good way to keep the community informed and prevent frustration. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. We turn now to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you would, please. Oh, George Quinn, I'm sorry. George, how could I forget you? Not in the holiday season, anyway.
Good evening once again. Hope everybody had a nice holiday. Also hope you guys have been watching the news lately. The executive officer for France has a pretty big problem. His popularity is down to 25%, which isn't too good right now. Large portions of Paris have been trashed because there are quite a few people in the public who are not happy with the increased tax for fuel, which they don't feel they can afford. So switch over to California and we have a lot of people in office, and some governments at least, that like to spend the taxpayers' money. It's one-party state pretty much now, so that means that there's not a heck of a lot of problem passing taxes. Today, I saw where there's a new proposal to have a 50% vote as opposed to a 2/3 one for bonds and special assessments. So all taxes pretty much are going to be easy to pass and that's going to be a real problem for the low-income and the people that are retired and owner of fixed income. You also have a lot of unfunded liability for pensions. And you have a lot of money, the government's spending on the homeless already and they're going to spend more probably, when that's really the preview of the nonprofits because they're getting an exemption from tax to be nonprofits. It's really their job, it's not the job of government. So I really hope this year and in the future, you guys are really watching your pennies because California is getting to a critical point to where it's going to go over the top and a lot of governmental agencies are going to be in the danger zone as far as their budget is concerned if they don't watch their pennies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. And now the process of consent and calendar action. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
I don't have any request to speak cards, so okay. Entertained a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted, been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Vicaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to new business, and that's why many of you are here this evening and what a joy this is going to be.
I'm sorry, before you start, I'm going to swear in Cornelia Gibson. She's the... A new commissioner for the Solano Commission for Women and Girls.
Dr. Gibson, come forward, please.
Testing. Can you hear me? Okay. If you could just repeat after me and raise your right hand, please. I, Cornelia Gibson...
I, Cornelia Gibson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.[861.75][861.75](Laughter)
And Dr. Gibson, thank you very much for going through the interview process, and I know that you're going to make a significant difference for the commission on women and girls.
Did her family... Did your family want to get a photo of her up there? Or did they already?
And now, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
And now, we will have Pamela Winneker, who is the mayor's lovely daughter. She will administer the oath of office to Mayor Harry T. Price. Yeah. It's his good side. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I.
State your name.
Harry T. Price.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you very much.[1000.11][1000.11](Applause)
And next, we'll have Melissa Nixon and Linda Mama Nixon will administer the oath of office to Councilwoman Catherine Moy.
I...
I.
State your name.
Catherine Maury Moy.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To that Constitution...
To the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well...
And that I will well.
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Amen.
Amen, in the name of the Lord. Thank you.[1168.91][1168.91](Applause)
Yeah, just... Does someone want to take a picture? And last but not least, we have Lauren Tim, and she will administer the oath of office to her father, Councilmember Chuck Tim.
Hi. No. Yes, it is. Okay, I don't really need it. You have the Bible? Okay. Repeat after me. I, Chuck Tim, do solemnly swear...
I, Chuck Tim, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sweetie.[1332.31][1332.31](Applause)
And we'll take a very brief five-minute recess, and then we'll come back for the selection of the mayors of the vice mayor, and then our business will be concluded. So five minutes, please. So, five minutes, please. Okay, Bill. We'll reconvene Fairfield City Council, and we have one item left, and that is the selection of the Vice Mayor. And Vice Mayor Tim, I want to thank you very sincerely for the extraordinarily fine job you did representing the mayor's office and the city council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the process is that the mayor selects a successor to Vice Mayor Chuck Tim with the approval of the city council. And I would like to recommend to my colleagues that the new Vice Mayor be Pamela Bertoni. Looking for a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye. Just a minute, please. If I could say something first, I'm, you know, I'm glad to see a woman, for the first time in 18 years, be nominated. What I find to be a little bit difficult here, because I totally support Pam, is that I have been looked over, and it's not about me, it's about disenfranchising people who voted for me. And in 2014, I was the top vote getter, and I was looked over, and I voted for Chuck Tim, and I thought they would correct this time. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but it is not your choice, and I think the city attorney can tell you it is not. It is from the city council who decides that. Is that true?
Yeah. Practice here has been for the mayor to initially make the motion, but the council has to approve it. So, it is a vote of the city council to whether or not, or who the Vice Mayor is going to be.
But he does, he does not necessarily have to make the, you know...
No, it's not, it's not the same as a commission appointment. This is, again...
Exactly.
Ultimately, the council's a council decision ultimately.
So, what I'm saying is, I think that it's best that the city council, if we are truly serving the people of Fairfield, they've made their decision, and they've made it twice. And so, I would ask that my colleagues honor that and not disenfranchise those people who voted for me as a top vote getter. And again, it's not about me. I think this is the practice we should have, that it should always go to the person who has just gotten the highest votes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Madam Vice Mayor. Look forward to working with you, and thank you.
This is an honor. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support, and I will work hard to represent, to do a great job. Thank you.
And before we adjourn for the evening, it's a remarkable experience to be able to serve in an elected position as we have. And one of the reasons it's remarkable is that City of Fairfield, down through the ages, has been very, very fortunate to have a very professional staff. Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, gentlemen, thank you both very much for making this the kind of place where democracy thrives. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Good night.